All right, we got the recording going on the commander's computer. I'd like to welcome everybody to this town hall for Southwest District. I'm Lieutenant Shane Foley with the IMPD Public Affairs Office. See, the mayor, chief, and commander are on here, so we will go ahead and get started. I first would like to welcome Mayor for some opening remarks. Mayor Hogsitt?
Well, thank you, and thank you for everyone joining tonight's call. Good evening. This is Mayor Joe Hogsitt, and I want to welcome you to this evening's IMPD District Town Hall for the Southwest District. Certainly, my thanks to Commander Tonya Terry, Southwest District Officers, and frankly, the entire staff of public safety personnel for joining with us this evening. Thanks also to the members of our Indianapolis community who have tuned in, zoomed in, listening in, and therefore participating. Through your participation tonight, you are playing an active role in helping build a safer and better Indianapolis. For the second year of this pandemic, each IMPD District has hosted a community meeting just like this one. We've, we believe, nobody knows a community like the people who live there. No one knows a neighborhood better than the neighbors themselves. And that is why your participation in calls like the one we are having tonight is so important. Furthermore, IMPD believes a more transparent, a more resident-focused process will be central to a safety city overall. In fact, that belief guides every major policy decision that we make around public safety in 2022 as well as 2023 and 2024. The city of Indianapolis will invest more in community organizations, neighborhood groups, and collaboratively with public safety efforts than we ever have in the history of the city of Indianapolis. That amounts to $150 million over three years. And that $150 million investment will always have a community-first approach in mind. For example, of that $150 million, $45 million of investment will be made in grassroots anti-violence organizations. It will also help us hire 50 total peacemakers, each one connecting residents to public resources. Now, peacemakers in Indianapolis is not a new idea. But when we first introduced the idea several years back, our budget allowed us to have maybe four, maybe five, maybe six peacemakers to work the entirety of Marion County. The funds that we are, have access to through the American Rescue Plan now allow us to hire 50 peacemakers to help connect residents to public resources. The $150 million investment we're making also includes $30 million to mental health access, plus millions more in job training, in re-entry services, in domestic use and domestic violence issues. And that $150 million will also allow us the means of equipping officers with $9 million in up-to-date technology and funding. Technology and funding that will be used to allow us to add 100 additional sworn officers to IMPD to be deployed throughout the city of Indianapolis and Marion County generally. So, again, the city is grateful to all of you for joining us at this pivotal time for public safety in Indianapolis. We thank you for your attention, for your commitment, and obviously, for your thoughtful participation and questions in the conversations that we will enjoy this evening. So with that, enough from me. Let me hand it over to our leader, Chief Randall Taylor, the chief of the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Good evening to everyone. It's great to be here with you this evening. Look forward to explaining the great efforts by your officers and supervisors on Southwest, also hopefully to answer some questions that you may have. I would like to start the day off by telling you that the 1,600-plus members of the IMPD are out serving all the different communities. This is, I think, our fourth or fifth town hall discussion. All of them have gone well. But one of the things that we hope to encourage is communication between the community and the police department. And I'm going to start off by sharing some news with you. A little bit troubling, but I share this with you in full disclosure and in full transparency. Earlier today, we did have an officer that was charged by the Marion County Prosecutor's Office with charges stemming from an incident that occurred while he was on duty. Those charges were battery and official misconduct. Now, official misconduct is a felony charge reserved for typically officers and people that are in positions of authority when the prosecutor's office believes they stepped outside of those boundaries, which is what we had here. Because Officer Lewis was charged with a felony, I then suspended him, suspended him pending termination. That doesn't mean that he's terminated. He still has the rights as any citizen that goes through the court system, but he will have to go through the court system. If he is found guilty of the felony, then he will be terminated and removed from the department. If he is not found guilty, then the merit board will then review that case and make a decision on whether or not he will retain his job or there'll be some other punishment, limited or minus termination. That's something that won't happen until the court case is settled. That's probably going to be down the road a piece. But I did want to share that with you. We did release that to the media. I will tell you, there's, it's always disappointing when those things happen when we have officers that are charged with crimes. However, I will tell you, in this particular situation, we had officers that stepped up, younger officers actually, that stepped up and felt that what happened, what transpired between him and the victim was wrong, was outside of the scope of law enforcement, and they notified their supervisor of their concerns. That then led to what we call a criminal investigation, which is handled by our Special Investigations Unit, as well as an internal investigation. The internal investigation is not yet complete, but the Criminal Investigation, ISU, is what led to a probable cause being submitted to the prosecutor's office, who then Ryan Mears and his staff reviewed that probable cause and decided to file the criminal charges of battery, which is misdemeanor, and the official misconduct, which is a felony. I hope you understand that I don't share this lightly. I share it mainly to let the community know that we're going to be transparent with the things that we do, but also to encourage those officers, those 1,600-plus that are out there doing it right and protecting you, not only on the Southwest but across Indianapolis. Those, those officers, I, hopefully, they understand that I do this to protect them and their reputation, as well as doing my best for the community to address these issues as they come up. But besides that, thank you so much again for being here. I will remain on this call, although I will not be on video, but I will be listening and will be able to step in and answer any questions that you may have after Commander Terry shares. So, thank you.
So before we go move it to Commander Terry, I neglected to remind everyone that if you do have questions, please enter those into the chat box there, and we will ask Commander Terry as many questions as we can once she finishes her presentation. And I'd also like to extend a welcome back to Commander Terry. She just finished training at the FBI National Academy and just came back recently. So congratulations to you, ma'am. And you want to go ahead and do your presentation, and we'll get to some chat.
Thank you, Lieutenant. It's really great to be back after a two-and-a-half, almost three-month absence from the district and my IMPD family and my, my family at home. But I'm, I'm back to get ready, to get back to work here, and I'm excited that we're getting into the summer months and the warmer months, and we can get back out and get back together with COVID in the rearview a little bit, at least on the downturn, and we can get back to some face-to-face interactions with our, our members of our community. So, to start with, just wanted to thank the mayor and the chief, the assistant chief, other members of our department that have joined the call, and at least a couple of counselors that are on the call, and then, most importantly, the members of the community and our community partners that are taking the time out of their evening to join us tonight. I do look forward to hearing your questions and your feedback and comments after the presentation. So stay tuned. Let me begin to share my screen and kind of go over what I'm going to talk about. All right. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, they can see it.
Okay. So the first thing I wanted to go over is just our agenda. Actually, I'm trying to advance the, there we go. Seems like my slides are a little bit delayed, so bear with me here. Going to go over the district as a whole, the geographic area that we cover, our staffing and our personnel, our different units contained within. I'm going to go over the crime trends, our accomplishments for 2021, our 2022 priorities and initiatives, and then we'll go over questions. So we have about 81 square miles of geography on Southwest District. We are in the southwesternmost corner of the county. We have 19 patrol beats, and our population is right around 130,000 residents that we serve. This is the snapshot of the district. We have a lot of units contained within our district. We have two captains currently, FTO specialists and admin assistant in the main office here. But then we have our three primary uniform patrol shifts that are day shift, middle shift, and late shift. I have their hours there on the screen for you. We have a district detective office. They investigate general crimes that don't fall to a specialty unit within the district or within the department under our investigations division. We have a neighborhood impact unit that also has some subcomponents. Our community relations unit is in there. The violent crimes task force, which are detectives. Violence reduction team, which are some uniform officers that work with the violent crimes task force detectives. And we do have an intelligence analyst as of last year for the first time. We also have a team of public assistance officers. We could use more of them, but right now we have two on the district. And there are civilians who assist us with people that walk in. They answer the phones, and they also help, the detective aide helps our detective unit with some phone calls and follow-ups on some of the cases that they investigate. And then another key component to our district is our mobile crisis assistance team, which you'll hear me refer to as MCAT. We have one sworn IMPD officer in that unit, and we do team up with two civilians with the Sandra Escanazi Mental Health Center. Very, very impactful to our district as a whole. Now, our staffing levels, you can see here where our numbers are. We have about 157 officers. Now, that fluctuates from time to time based on retirements and injuries and that sort of thing. And then along with those 157 officers, we have five lieutenants, 18 sergeants supervising those officers on the district. So I wanted to go over our current crime trends, which the chief didn't have a chance to mention it here with you guys, but I'm going to. Our homicides and non-fatal shootings across the agency are trending down. And right now, we are somewhere between 23% and 26% down across the city. So we're very proud of that. Southwest robberies are down. For us, right now, we're down almost 53%. Burglaries are down. Arsones are down. Auto thefts are down, and our arson's are down about 85%, which we had a problem pop up last year. We addressed it, and I think that that's a result of the work that we put in last year on that. Our 2021 highlights, like I said, overall, crime on Southwest District was down. And then a big change that I wanted to share with you was the implementation of what we call the ECSI, which stands for Enhanced Community Safety Initiative. And what we did was restructured some of our personnel, traditional narcotics unit and flex team, which were uniform proactive officers. And they now comprise the violent crimes task force and the violence reduction teams that I mentioned as a part of the district snapshot. And they're not all exactly the same people that were in those previous units. They're newly, newly formed units with a new focus and different priorities. And the focus is on violence, specifically gun violence and narcotics that have a nexus to violence, which most narcotics activity does, and with a very laser focus on people, places, and behaviors that are contributing to that violence on the district. We also implemented a comprehensive Southwest District approach to impacting gun violence. Our focus is very team approached, team focused, and we do not like to work in silos. That's not part of our motto on Southwest. We believe that everyone needs to contribute to the common goal and the mission, and we believe that in team success, there is also individual success. We have made numerous arrests of shooting suspects, robbery suspects, burglars, and drug dealers. And we have a reason to believe that we have actually prevented some shootings from happening on our district as a result of that team approach and those focused efforts. The, one of the things I want to highlight from last year that we're, we're going to be focusing on again in 2022 is our increased foot patrols. The intention there is to increase our community outreach and establish new partnerships in our neighborhoods. When our officers are getting out of their cars and getting in the neighborhoods, we're looking for our community members to come out and talk to us and for us to work together to address our issues. Now, another important thing I want to mention is that Southwest District piloted a juvenile pre-arrest diversion program. We have a partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Indianapolis to promote that program. And Southwest District is currently the only district where juveniles for low-level offenses can be diverted completely out of our criminal justice system and connected to resources in the community with our community partners. We think that's a very important key concept with procedural justice initiatives and attacking problems in our youth before they grow into bigger problems. So this is an important initiative that we want to continue to focus on moving into 2022. Just a couple of slides worth of stats for you guys. 2021 MCAT, now understand that last year they were called the Behavioral Health Unit. They've been restructured, and it's called MCAT. But they, if you, as you can see by looking down this list, the impact that they've had in our community with all of the work that they've put in. And this doesn't even capture everything that they do for us. They have worked with me and other units within our district to address specific problems in, whether it be with group homes or other entities that are having repeat problems. They will drop everything and hop in a meeting, go out to a site and follow up, and, and work tirelessly until we have a resolution that's acceptable for the, the residents and the, the officers involved. So they save us a lot of, of work and time in, in the background, and they're often unrecognized, recognized. So I want to give them their due recognition. Our unit, we have Detective Tracy Lomax, and they're partnered with Stephanie Lovell and Cynthia Donnell with Sandra Escanazi Mental Health Center. So I just want to give them their due credit. Now, in looking at our violent crimes task force and violence reduction team stats from last year, now this is only capturing from April of 2021 to December of 2021. Those units were implemented, as I said, in April, and you can see here. Things I wanted to draw to your attention out of, out of this chart here are that we got 199 firearms off the street in that amount of time. We took 585 grams of fentanyl off the street, served 210 search warrants, almost 3,000 grams of methamphetamine, and we made 191 outright felony arrests. I want to bring to your attention the fact that this year, as of one week ago today, we have already recovered 54 guns off the streets. And that's just our Southwest District teams that are doing that work. So excellent work that they're doing. I think that we are seeing the results of that in, in our crime stats. Another unit that I really am proud of on Southwest District is our community relations unit. And the entire unit is pictured in this photo. I wish I could say that the unit was bigger, and it's certainly a goal of mine to grow this unit. Lieutenant Alan Tuttle, our Crime Watch Specialist, Paula Barnes, Officer Justin Musser, and Sergeant Dave Spurgeon do an excellent job for us. As you can see by the numbers on the, the screen here, they have, despite COVID, conducted numerous amounts of events and meetings. They also work with the rest of the district to solve problems that are brought to our attention by our community members. I'm proud to say that we have over 175 Crime Watch groups on Southwest District alone and only one Crime Watch Specialist. So as you can imagine, they stay very busy. I do also want to mention that one of the things that they do that I think provides a great service to the community is they present active shooter presentations and provide information on how churches or businesses, groups, can best prepare for those terrible situations when they arise. So very proud of that team, and you'll probably hear a little bit more about them as I continue on. One of our successes from 2021 was the fact that we were able to have an in-person community day again. And here are some photos from last September's Community Day here on Southwest District. Thanks to anybody who attended and joined us on that event, but I also want you to save the date for this year's Community Day on Southwest District. September seemed to be such a big hit that we are going to stick with the month of September. And we're going to have our Community Day on September 15th at the same location. It's the park right next to our headquarters here on King Avenue. So please put that in your calendar and as a placeholder and come out and join us in September. To go over the overall philosophy and strategy, and this is a part of the bigger IMPD plan, but specific to Southwest, we are going to continue the beat policing model. We want our officers to have, take ownership of the beat that they're assigned. We, our goal is to have the same officers as much as possible working the same area and getting to know those members in their, of their community and their business owners and really taking some pride in the work that they put in every day when they get out to their beat. We're going to continue to target people, places, and behaviors, like I mentioned already. Cannot hit home enough the fact that community involvement is essential. It's essential to the success of the officers, and it's essential for our community in having a partner in problem solving. We are going to use data from crime trends, our input that we're getting from our citizens, and the evidence recovered at scenes to impact this violence that we're experiencing and other problems that aren't related to violence. Every officer on Southwest District is expected to do his or her part with innovation, proactivity, and teamwork. Teamwork is a common theme throughout all of our discussions here on Southwest. And like I said before, every entity and every unit works with each other to achieve our goals. And that partnership and essence of teamwork extends outside of IMPD with our community partners and other agencies. Some of our priorities for 2022, again, I'm not going to read all of these, but as you can see from this long list here, we have a lot of important things that we want to accomplish and continue to work toward in 2022. Impacting violence is at the top of our list. Again, a team approach to address quality of life issues in our neighborhood. And we want to continue to grow the use of our juvenile pre-arrest diversion program and connect our youth to resources before they begin having bigger problems. And part of that involves providing the entire family with those resources, which is an important part of what's going on in our communities. We can't just take the juvenile alone. We have to address the entire family dynamic and see what resources that particular family needs to help them move forward. We will also continue to leverage our partnerships with federal partners and US Attorney's Office for any cases that would qualify for federal prosecution. And we are really looking forward to resuming in-person community meetings, events, and partnerships. I do want to mention that we have some emerging technology for Southwest District that we haven't had the luxury of having in the past. We are going to be the recipient of a total of about 33 cameras on Southwest District that are going to help our detectives and our officers zero in on specific offenders and crime contributors and give us another tool in the toolbox to help address the crime issues. Now, just to briefly go over our posture for 2022 for our patrol officers, again, we're going to continue the beat policing model. And one thing I really want to emphasize is we intend to continually increase our use of foot and bike patrols in the neighborhood with an emphasis on making connections while we're out on patrol, whether it be on foot or on bike. I invite you, as members of the community, that if you see us out, please come out and talk to us. We want to hear from you. We want to talk to you. We want to learn from you. And I can't say it enough. I feel like I'm a broken record, but officers will continue to use a team approach to address violence and neighborhood issues. The mantra continues to be, what are we doing to address the violence today? Now, with our violent crimes task force and our violence reduction teams, they are going to continue to build on the success that they've already had from 2021 moving into 2022. We're going to have, like the, the chief mentioned and the mayor mentioned, and I've mentioned, the additional technology investment that will benefit Southwest District. We're going to use that to the fullest and continue with that people, places, and behavior targeted approach to impacting violence. Our detectives' unit is going to continue to aggressively investigate crimes of violence as well as property crimes. We know that not every neighborhood is impacted equally by violence, and even neighborhoods that are impacted by violence have other concerns that are important to them as well. And we want to make sure that we address all of those concerns. And we want to make sure that we address all of those concerns. Um, our detectives' unit will also receive any training available in the use of all the latest technology to help them, uh, leverage that technology as it becomes available. And now I have, uh, I'll leave this slide up here for, uh, just a minute. If you have a question or want to know how to get ahold of us, our number is 317-327-6400. But each component, uh, that I've mentioned and discussed already is listed here on this slide of contact information. Uh, I welcome you to contact us and reach out. And, uh, with that, Lieutenant Foley, are we ready for some questions?
Absolutely. Nikki, I saw your question about, uh, who's on the Community Relations Unit. Hopefully that question was answered during the presentation. If not, feel free to send us a message and we'll clarify that. Um, how does, the question we have is how does Southwest District staffing compare with other districts? We don't see many officers out in zip code 46113.
I would say that, uh, Southwest and, and Southeast and Downtown District have the least amount of staffing out of the officers, uh, on the department. However, um, I will note that we're a little bit down from where we normally are. And, uh, I would ask that anybody in the community that, uh, knows somebody that would be interested in joining IMPD, we can use all the help that we can get. And I would, uh, encourage anyone, uh, to join us and help us, uh, join the ranks of IMPD to address these issues.
Chief, can I ask you to maybe chime in and discuss the process of decision-making of how staff is allocated through the different districts?
Uh, yeah, we would look at, uh, well, some of it's based on, you know, losses that the district incur. Some districts, uh, for instance, over the last few years, Northwest has lost a significant amount of officers did retirements. And so we try to make sure we backfill them as best we can when new recruits come out, um, to get them back to where they were before, uh, the previous class. But beyond that, uh, run load, uh, workload, um, the amount of violence that, that, that is, uh, occurring in a particular district, all those things are accounted for when the, there's a distribution of personnel. We know that we need more people, uh, not just Southwest District, but all of our districts and all of our shifts. And so that's, uh, what we've been working toward. That's why we have enough money to hire 1,843 cops. Uh, we've spent, under Chief Taylor's direction, two years going through our personnel table and eliminating positions that did not need to be, uh, on the, on the personnel table anymore and pushing those personnel back to the street as much as possible. We've done that, but there's still more work to do in that particular area. But, uh, the more officers we hire, the more you'll see in your neighborhoods.
Thanks, sir. Next question we have is when someone steals your mail, what is, what does it mean when they say whitewashing it and changing the name and amount? They put their name on it so they can cash it. Why aren't they arrested? Uh, this one might take a little bit of clarification because, uh, maybe this is a very specific example of when someone wasn't charged for the case. I'm not sure, but, Commander, you want to give it a shot anyways?
Yeah, I would say that we had a, a different investigative unit that, that primarily took, uh, that type of a case on. And, uh, I know Chief Adams is on the call, but I don't know if he, uh, wants to speak on it. Uh, charging decisions are strictly up to the Marion County Prosecutor's Office. And if a charge, uh, if they just declined a charge, it's really up to the prosecutor and we have very little, uh, recourse when that, uh, is declined. So I don't know if it was evidentiary based. It seems like a very specific question. Uh, that's the best thing that I can give right now.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that specifically, typically mail crime, um, is US Postal Inspector. So typically that would be a crime that, that they would, uh, look at as well, not, not knowing specifically this case.
Thank you very much.
In typical fashion, that is US Postal Service, Postal Inspector.
Let me, let me step in if I could, um, since I worked financial crimes at one point. Uh, so when a check is whitewashed in order to, uh, remove, uh, the original, uh, payee, uh, the, the problem that we have, and I imagine it still exists even though it's been decades since I've been in financial crimes. But, uh, one of the problems that occurs is when people present that check to a bank, it's, um, it, it's usually cashed and, and then the, the difficulty sometimes is figuring out, uh, who that actual person is. So, uh, let's say you have, let's say you bank with Chase. If you bank with Chase, uh, and those people cash that, that check with Chase Bank, typically they'll, they'll make sure you've got it in your account and, and then they go ahead and pay it out. The problem comes in is where you may have written a check, but you didn't write it to that person. You wrote it to someone else and you certainly could have changed, the, the amount could have been changed. Uh, and then you have to kind of work that investigation backwards in order to figure out, uh, who did it. Uh, sometimes you, you get fortunate with, um, bank cameras and stuff, but many times those people have got IDs that it's really not them, but it is an ID. So it, you know, it's kind of unfortunately, it's kind of hit or miss. And then there's typically a delay in that as well. So, uh, those are some of the things that you're up against, uh, with that. However, um, uh, back when I was there, you could indeed get the charges filed on forgeries or frauds. Uh, so it's not impossible, but sometimes it does take a while and, uh, some is dependent on the amount. Uh, typically, um, the, the person who would issue the check, uh, is usually not held responsible, uh, for that. So, um, that's a benefit, but that doesn't make it any easier. Uh, the accounts can be, uh, jeopardized like that.
Thank you, Chief. Next question we have is what areas are considered hotspots on Southwest District?
So we, uh, we use our intelligence analysts to evaluate our, and identify our, our hotspots on a regular basis. As a matter of fact, I just got an updated list today from our analyst who does an excellent job for us. Uh, I'm not going to go into the actual specific locations, but we do identify hotspots within each zone and each beat. And we, uh, provide those maps to the officers that are working the areas so that they can direct their attention to those areas. Uh, we also share that with the rest of the teams, uh, on the district, uh, so that they can focus on those areas. But, um, each, each beat has, uh, is also compared against locations within itself, if that makes sense. So that, that officer that runs that beat knows the hottest area in his or her beat. And then those maps are generated and shared. So I, I hope that helps answer a question. Um, I'm happy to answer questions offline or directly about any specific locations.
Next question is, uh, Mayor Hawks, I indicated there's money for new officers. Are there officers, basically there's money for new officers. What would make IMPD A go to your destination for a police officer? Why does somebody want to join our agency?
Uh, I'm happy to take that. Um, well, Indianapolis is a major city, big city, lots of opportunities for growth within this agency. We have 1,843 spots. Uh, some of the smaller agencies, they may be able to give you a new car every year. Um, but you could be stuck on late shift for several years. Here you can be a detective, uh, and multiple different level, levels, whether at the district or in one of our core units. Um, you can be a canine handler. You can ride a horse for a living. You can ride a bike. You can be on full-time SWAT. You can fly drones. Um, you can do, uh, you can be a sergeant, lieutenant, captain, can be the chief of police. She'd be Tanya Terry, although she's very special and there's only one of her. You can be her. Um, and, uh, you know, Indianapolis is the place to be. Uh, and this is the best department in the Midwest for sure, uh, if not the country. And our training is second to none. Uh, we have the top-notch instructors and FTOs, which are field training officers. Uh, and we pay pretty darn good. And at the end of 20 years, if you do it the right way, uh, you can walk away with a pension the rest of your life, which is not something you can get, uh, in other industries right now around, um, you know, in the workforce. Plus you can stare at, uh, Kinnale's handsome face as much as you want.
I'll just add to that, Chief, the ability to serve, the ability to serve your community.
Thank you both. Commander, this one's going to be specifically for you. Could you take some time to expand on the activities and goals of the Community Relations Unit?
Absolutely. Um, one thing that comes to mind, as I've already mentioned, uh, before is getting back out into the community, uh, with our increased foot and bike patrols. But something that we already do that we want to build on is, uh, developing an alliance with our apartment communities and, uh, having work groups with them and focus groups with them. And we'd also like to expand, uh, our business alliance, uh, and get our businesses working together with us, uh, across Southwest District. Uh, those are just a couple of the things that I'd like to mention. And for me personally, I'd like to grow the unit, uh, to add some officers to that unit at the first opportunity so that we can do even more.
Next question is we have a lot of out-of-state plates with outdated license plate tags up to two years old. Do you have any officers that can look into these? And I will go ahead, um, before you answer that, I'm just sure that I will put in the chat a request Andy link, uh, that may help, uh, persons asking this question with some of their problem.
So the question was, are we trying to address the expired plates, uh, in the city?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's, uh, parked cars that are abandoned or if it's referring to cars that are just driving around the city. Uh, certainly we don't have officers who are, their sole job is going around, uh, looking for expired plates. We're laser focused on violent crime.
Yeah, that is a, uh...
Certainly if there's a ordinance violations, maybe that's a concern.
Yeah, if there's a, if the situation is that the cars are parked somewhere for, uh, extended amount of time, please let us know. We're happy to address those case by case. Uh, if it's a mo, moving traffic violation, that would be an equipment violation and our officers, that's one of the, the easiest and most, uh, readily available things for our officers to observe while they're out patrolling. And they, uh, have the discretion, uh, throughout their shift to make those traffic stops as they see fit. And, uh, what we find a lot of times is that people mistakenly, uh, forget to put the sticker on their license plate. So, uh, that's what we find more times than not. And, uh, if it's a legitimate, uh, expired license plate, the officers have, uh, a multitude of options for addressing that issue on the stop.
See, the next question we have here is what do you consider minor crimes? Question such as cars parked in front of our houses that we've never seen before, damage to stop and, stop signs and street signs?
Yeah, I would say that you could, uh, I mean, it's a very subjective term, absolutely. I don't want to get, uh, backed into a corner on, uh, on a, an absolute list, but things that are, uh, crimes of violence are certainly, uh, a higher priority. Uh, minor crimes that involve property damage and, uh, and property crimes like thefts would be categorized as more, uh, minor crimes that don't involve personal injury or a crime against a person. And that doesn't mean, uh, that they're not important to us. We want to address those, uh, as well as the, uh, crimes against people. But you can see where we have to have, uh, priorities set and the priority is always going to be with our people.
What can the community do to help IMPD and help to, help itself, um, addressing crime and disorder?
I would ask, uh, anyone who is, is out in the, in their community and, and sees one of our officers either on patrol or on a foot patrol or bike patrol to please talk to us about what's going on, talk to us about what you're seeing. Uh, maybe even ask the officers some questions. Uh, we want to listen to you. We're here for you and we want to work together, um, to help address your issues. I would also encourage you that if you're not already a part of an active crime watch, to please seek one out or contact our office. If you don't have one in your neighborhood, we would love to start one and get you guys, uh, and your neighborhood and your neighbors all involved, uh, on crime watch activities. Uh, you are our eyes and ears in the neighborhoods and we need to hear from you and we need to talk to you and, uh, and work together to solve the issues. And finally, uh, I would ask for you to encourage, uh, your, your friends and family to, uh, join this noble profession and help us. Uh, recruiting, I can't hit home enough how badly we need, uh, good officers and good people to serve our communities and give back.
Let me step in if I could here. Commander, you've done a spectacular job. I appreciate it. Uh, but folks, we really do need, uh, new officers. However, I understand that this job is not for everyone, but I think you'll hear in the next few days, on April 30th, we're hoping to have a, uh, kind of a first responders, uh, job fair. Uh, you'll hear more about that as it comes, but it'll be, um, people looking to hopefully join IMPD, but not only us, but the Sheriff's Department, um, Dispatch and IEMS. Uh, all these different units are doing different things and need different types of people. So you may say, well, I don't think law enforcement is for me, but maybe, maybe you give Dispatch a run. Uh, all these, uh, these different, um, units we're talking about will pay you while you're being trained. And, uh, and that's a good place to be. Um, Dispatchers, uh, they'll take you to, I think there is, uh, uh, there are a couple months, maybe more on training you on how to, uh, handle, how to deal with those calls and calm yourself. You may say, I don't think that I could do that, but you'd be surprised what they can train you to help you to do. Uh, same thing with IEMS. Um, they are a big push right now. 18 to 24 years of age, they want to turn you into a paramedic. And again, they will train you and pay you while that, that is going on and then they will hire you full-time, uh, assuming you pass those different standards. Uh, but I think as a community, sometimes we, we shut those things off before we even give them a chance. Uh, the Sheriff's Department is looking for, um, uh, deputies to run the jail. You know, it's, it's not for everyone, but again, these are opportunities, uh, that we're trying to fill within the community. So please consider those things. If you know people that are of high quality, uh, please let it, let's talk to them, see if it's right for them.
And Commander, and thank you, Chief. Next question is for the technology that Southwest is going to be getting, have the location for those items been determined or is that going to be done in conjunction with, uh, feedback from the community?
Yes, uh, the locations have been determined. As a matter of fact, um, the majority of the, uh, cameras, the new cameras have already been installed. The, uh, final cameras are slated for completion, I think by, uh, mid-April. And we did have a combination of input to determine those locations. Uh, some of that input was based on crime trends. Some of the input was based on, uh, direct feedback from the officers that are working those areas. And some of the input, input was also from, uh, some members of the community. Uh, those meetings all, uh, took place last year.
Next question is the quote is if you see something, say something. When you see someone doing something or driving erratically is even worth calling it in. When this happens, it's, it seems that there's no place around. How many times will it take before there's an issue? Uh, this might be a two-part question because drive, erratic driving is, is one thing and, um, is handled one way, whereas you see a suspicious person or suspicious vehicle might be handled differently. Um, maybe it would be helpful if you could go through and explain what is the process for determining how officers are going to handle those runs? And that, you know, there's different factors that go into the decision-making process.
Well, I wish we had somebody from Dispatch on here to, to get more, um, into the specifics, but I can tell you generally speaking, if somebody is going to call in and report, um, somebody who's driving erratically, like, uh, maybe they think that they're speeding or they're, uh, changing lanes too much, uh, that may be something that is an information-only broadcast for officers in the area. If it's something that they, uh, believe to be an impaired driver and there's a bigger, uh, danger to the public, uh, that might be something that Dispatch asks the caller to stay on the line and, and continue to just give us updates as they can and, uh, from a safe distance and not get directly involved. And then, uh, the, the crime in progress or a suspicious person, uh, certainly crimes in progress are dispatched upon immediately, but... But I can't get into the specifics of the Dispatch protocols. It's not my, my area of expertise, but that's, I'm just speaking from experience and generalization there.
And I'll add to this that, you know, if somebody calls in, somebody driving fast or not changing, not using turn signal or something like that, if we responded to all those calls, we wouldn't be able to respond to the crimes in progress. But even just yesterday, Southwest District had a suspected DUI and officers responded and turns out that the individual wasn't intoxicated, but rather needed medical attention. And that was feedback that people, you know, the caller had eyes on this individual and was able to provide some additional feedback. And officers were able to get there because of that. But yeah, if we just had, there's somebody driving erratically on 10th Street, 10th and Tibbs, and by the time the officers get there, that vehicle's likely going to be gone already. So each particular call dictates the response that we get. Again, if you have any more questions, we've got time for just a few more. Chief Bailey's put some information into the chat about how to apply for different jobs, IMPD as well as other jobs. Please continue, please give that a look. See if you've got any more questions in the, we don't have any there. Don't have any there. We're kind of rounding out the time we've got here, so. Go ahead and Commander, if you have any closing comments, we'll hear those from you and then it'll pass it off to Chief Taylor for some closing comments.
I'm just super thrilled to be here with you all tonight. I wish it weren't virtually and I know that I'm going to have plenty of opportunities in the coming months to meet with different members of the community face to face. And I can assure you that I myself will be out on foot patrols and I hope that when you see me, that you'll come out and talk to me and chat me up. I'm excited to hear from you.
Yeah, so I'll just close by saying I hope you found this helpful. I hope you found it encouraging. I hope we got at least most of your questions answered. We will continue to do these. There'll, there'll probably be another one this year. As Commander Terry said, she, I think she'd probably prefer that to be in person. I think I'm along with her with that. And, but we're always available to you. And when the person was talking about seeing something and saying something, I will tell you, we have had murders solved by community members just being willing to step up and tell us what they saw. If, if that, which is usually considered the most serious crime that we deal with here in Indianapolis, imagine what can happen with people just willing to share the other things that they saw, those things that may be considered lesser crimes. We're all in this community. I live in this community. I want to be the best that it can be. So I'm with you. Let's do what we can to make it the best that we can. And I know that that includes our community members. So thank you very much for just being here and spending some time with us this evening.
Thank you, everyone, and that concludes our town hall. Have a great evening.